Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Brisbane City Council meeting. Please rise and join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Okay, and you were thinking about moving or recognizing Mr. Bob Maynard for all the work he's done at the beginning of our agenda?
I think probably after item B in presentations.
That sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, I know there's a lot of people that want to talk about airport noise again. Do we have that on the agenda, or is that someplace you want to put that?
You know, that was going to be under Mayor and Council Matters. We can move that up to, what we could do is just put it in Oral Communications. Since it's not on the agenda, we can move it up to Oral Communications.
Okay, that's at the beginning of the agenda, so.
That's right, and then they could talk about, because that's what you're addressing, that since there's people here that want to talk about it, that they can talk about it, and then don't have to stay for the entire meeting.
Okay, but whatever you choose.
Okay.
Well, wouldn't we want to just make it part of Oral Communications since it's not an agendized topic?
Yes, you know, under Mayor or Council Matters, I was going to inform the council regarding an update on the roundtable meeting, the last meeting we had, as well as a workshop that we had here in Brisbane. I also wrote a letter, it's a draft letter, for the council to evaluate, and also for the community to evaluate. The Airport Roundtable is having their, they're having their meeting on the 2nd of November, and that meeting, they will determine the final response to the FAA's initiative. And so it's important that all cities provide final input, and that we all speak with one voice moving forward with the FAA to make changes that hopefully reduce.
Want to make that item be under Mayor Council Matters and then move the presentation or the, for Bob Maynard's resignation?
So you're, well, since item B under Presentations is Mosquito Abatement District Update on Infectious Diseases.
Oh.
And Bob, you're going to be giving that presentation?
No.
No?
The manager of the mosquito abatement district, the VP.
Okay, all right, Cindy.
Will give that.
Okay, well, I think it would be appropriate to recognize Bob at that time.
Yeah, I think so, too, move, so move item B from Mayor Council Matters up to item B of Presentations.
Yes, I think that was Councilmember O'Connell's direction.
I, I think it's to add the recognition for Bob Maynard, and that we can, if, if the representative from the mosquito abatement district would like to be present for our discussion about the resignation, then perhaps that'd be good also.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
But are we adding a topic of roundtable discussion? Since it's not on the, the agenda, we really can't have a discussion.
Yeah, no, no, we're, we're not. I was, again, during, under Mayor and Council Matters, just providing an update. Again, we have this letter before us, and I just wanted to share that with you. We will take input from the community, of course, and.
But they could also do that under Oral Communications at the beginning.
They, they can do that under Oral Communications, absolutely.
And Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, because under Oral Communications, that doesn't provide for discussion by the council concerning the matter, it's simply to receive the information from the public.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with those changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. All right, so, that brings us to Oral Communications. And so I have a list of slips here, and I'm going to just call them as, you know, the first ones that came up. So Tony Varios, I know you want to talk about the, the smoking ordinance, but also you have jet noise.
Mayor and City Council, on the Brisbane resident and business owner here, and on the smoking ordinance, that's going to come up later, and we can deal with that later. I support that. On, on the aircraft noise issue this afternoon, it was about quarter to six or so, we got an email from the mayor about the letter that you will see later, or discuss later today, and my reaction to that was, there were a couple of good points in it, but it was largely negative, because I don't think it protects Brisbane. As far as the, the, the biggest concern I have in this situation is our city council is not in a position right now to adequately judge the critical factors that are impacting the city's residents with noise. You had that one city council meeting where we had some substantial discussion about it, but most of this, most of the city council members, I don't think, are fully up to speed on the details and the gravity of all the issues that are involved. It's my opinion that the FAA has created a, a program meant to fail, where rather than doing the job that they're paid to do, they're pushing it off on all the San Mateo cities and San Francisco, which isn't really very interested necessarily in doing anything to help us. So Mike, I, I think that, that it's unfair to our mayor to have him put in a position where he's got to shoulder all this responsibility, and he doesn't have the professional background to do it, and the consultants that are advising him through the San Francisco Noise Abatement Office, I think that's it, and the roundtable. I'm not impressed with the quality of work there, and they, it seems that they both have very serious conflicts of interest in terms of advising Brisbane on what's good for us and what we can do to protect ourselves. So I will just read two small things for you. One, on big government. Once again, government succeeds best at failing miserably, not because it can't be made to work well, but because it's too often designed not to work well. And the second is the beauty of determination. Perfection is the enemy of progress. Take well-reasoned risks to follow your dreams. Compromise is the enemy of integrity. Take care what you seek and what you give away. Selfishness is the enemy of peace. Love poisoned by hate yields only revenge. Reason is a casualty of war. Beware, there are minefields everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Ingrid, can you make sure that the, since, because there are going to be a lot of people, it sounds like that, put in slips, can you make sure that the timer is on? I don't know.
Oh.
Because I just don't see the lights. Not that Tony spoke too long, but I just don't see any light.
That's what we have, is five, that's what we do, right, for normal meetings? It was five minutes.
Five minutes.
Andrew Torvik.
Good evening, Andrew Torvik, 231 Alvarado Street, 54-year Brisbane resident, same house, haven't moved. The only thing that's changed around there is the rocks have a little more moss on them, and so does the ground. We have had some time to examine a sewage break in the property next door to me, whereupon there was a Band-Aid patch some years ago, and I was assured that the flow would be okay, and it was determined by our city engineer at the time with a shallow look of going back in the pipe. He made examination, but he didn't go to the entire length of the pipe. It's like looking only halfway. If we're only going to use one sensor eye, we should use the benefit of modern people in, and looking up into the pipe in its entirety before we render any decision as to the safety concerns of animals that continue to lap from a cesspool I have been forced to live next door to. It's gnawed the concrete, it's visual, and there's a lot of aspects to the fact that it has been looked at, but we have to look at the entire scope of the look. Can't just say, we, we looked at it. Of course you did. That answers the question for sight, but did you look entirely? Did you make an adequate search with your eyes? No, none was done. There's a recording of it. There's also a four-page letter that I wrote by hand to, to the city of Brisbane that Clay Holstein's well aware of, and he defends the idea that it's a done deal now. The owner's, the house has been sold, no disclosures, and the disclosures that were made at the time, I was labeled as somebody that was interfering with, with the sale of the property, and it went through between two realtors. And there was a three-foot passage easement in there which belongs to the city, cannot be sold, and there's conditions upon a 1951 use permit that was issued that blockage in anything except for egress and ingress is what's allowed, and the conditions at the time, and it must be maintained for fire safety, but moreover for the safety of the individuals concerned. My concerns are underground, not over the top. I'm not begging for any solution immediately. Would you please read the letter that Clay has, it's addressed to the city of Brisbane? I made a mistake when I gave it to him, I should have brought it to you directly, because if you're unaware of it, read it and discern, and then there's no hurry for something that's taken years to, to be, have been a problem to me. What's another year or two? But you see, my, my life is short now. I've, I've been given some short time, and I'd like to ensure the fact that not just for my daughter and my grandchildren, it's the ground that they stand upon, that I want to give to them, and to the future generations if dogs and cats and raccoons that lap from that cesspool be dealt with. If it's sewage, put it in a sewer pipe. Do not let it roll over the surface as you have done by not acknowledging the safety factors therein for groundwater contamination. And Randy Bruhl is an engineer, he can very well, easily convince you that he made some tests, but they didn't make the test to rule out chloramine. If there's presence of chloramine in the test that they did not adequately do, that means it's gray water, and it's been used and treated. Spring water does not contain chloramine. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Jai Dz, Rajan?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Brisbane resident Jagdish Rajan, living at 124 Butterweed Lane, and I'm here to talk about the aircraft noise. So obviously, we have too many flights flying over Brisbane, and we need immediate relief on this. There's an SFO roundtable, that plan that you may be aware of, that we are being asked to adopt, and we do not agree with this plan. If we adopt this aircraft noise plan, then the aircraft noise will only be the same or possibly even get worse. And again, the plan is, as Cliff mentioned to me earlier, a recommendation to our Congresswoman, and, and she's going to make the final decision. But I guess my fear is that we're going to be locked in with the, with an agreement to the FAA if we adopt this plan. Therefore, we plead with you to reject the plan, the roundtable plan. Our quality of life and health are being damaged here because of the aircraft noise, and a short-term solution for this should be to return to what they call the pre-next-gen procedures. Phoenix, Arizona, I believe, has successfully made this request and adopted it. For the long term, the FAA needs to study the health effects of aircraft noise on us, and most importantly, prioritize our health and welfare, along with the safety of aircrafts, above corporate profits, that is, the profits of the airlines. You're going to hear many of us, many of my friends from Brisbane, speaking about this issue with varying levels of technical details on this. But fundamentally, we are speaking with one voice, which is to reduce aircraft noise and to reject this plan. Thank you.
You can go, Christine.
Thank you for your time this evening. Really appreciate all the work that the council members and our mayor have done to ensure the quality of life of Brisbane, to support and represent our community. And I know that it is a tireless and thankless job that all of you have signed up for, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do for Brisbane. I'd like to echo some of the words and sentiments that my fellow neighbors have already shared. Being a resident of Brisbane, the aircraft noise is a resounding problem. It continues to be an issue that I'm very worried about, very scared that property values will diminish, quality of life will continue to diminish, and our citizenry will not get enough sleep. That's my primary concern, getting enough sleep. I know that we have had the support of several experts from FAA, from Councilwoman Spear's office. They've generously donated their time and energy, but they are serving multiple parties, a broader community. And what I want to do is ensure that Brisbane is duly represented with expert advice and counsel, so that we are not locked into a situation that we can't get out of. The FAA is going to be bringing their experts, and we would be remiss if we don't equip our community, our mayor, with the same backing, a consultant of some sort, to make sure that everything that we are doing moving forward is ensuring that we are not going to render the situation worse, and that we are looking out for our citizens.
Eric Kornenski.
I also wanted to speak about the airplane noise that's been affecting the community. I do want to thank all of you guys, all of the council members for being here tonight, for all your support. And also, Cliff, thank you for working hard on the roundtable. I know you've done a lot, and you've met a lot with us. But I also want to echo a lot of the feelings of the community that, I read your letter that you're going to be sending over to the roundtable, and I also feel that, in the end, we're not really reaching any type of resolution with the FAA, and we're not really reaching any type of resolution that's going to benefit Brisbane. I moved, I haven't been as long of a resident here as some people. I moved here in 2012. I'm from San Francisco, lived there my whole life. I work in emergency services in San Francisco, and I was looking for a quiet place to live in, in the Bay Area, and we searched all around, we found Brisbane, we really love it up here, we moved up to the ridge, and like I said, I moved here in 2012. In 2015, we noticed a significant increase in flights. It was, we've always had some flights, and I've known that to be, you know, acceptable fact of life, we do live in Brisbane, we are close to the airport. However, in 2015, the amount of flights significantly increased. It got to the point where I've been woken up at, say, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, or when I try to go to bed after 10 o'clock, I have a hard time sleeping. I'm a light sleeper, and so, and unfortunately with my job, sometimes I'm working past midnight, or I can be working at 5 o'clock in the morning, so sometimes, hey, great, it's an alarm clock that wakes me up in time, but a lot of times I can get home really late, and unfortunately I've only gotten five hours of sleep before I need to go to work the next day. And looking over the proposal, a lot of it, a lot of it speaks to, we don't want noise over Brisbane during nighttime. Well, there's been a large discrepancy of what nighttime really means. The FAA has determined, or what we've asked is, hey, does nighttime mean between 10:00 PM and 6:00 PM? Well, the FAA's answer has always been nighttime means when we have a significant amount of reductions in the amount of flights that we have. And unfortunately, even the FAA, or the spokesman for the airport has said nighttime could mean 11:00 PM, it could be 12 o'clock, it could be 1 o'clock in the morning, and as long as that's considered nighttime for them. So I'm sorry, I need to get more sleep in four hours a day. And what's happening is all of these flights are going directly over Brisbane now, they're going especially over the ridge, and this is something that the proposal that the roundtable has put forward does not adequately address. There is nothing in there that specifically addresses those facts, that actually moves or shifts the planes over from that area, and accurately disperses them around the whole Bay Area. So I also urge all of you not to reject that letter. We need to find a consultant. Like I said, I appreciate all your work, Cliff, but we can't have one person who's not an expert on this answer to the FAA and tell them how to do their job. The FAA has screwed this up from the very beginning, and so we need to fight, as a city, we need to stand together and get a consultant who understands this, who's able to do the proper research with the FAA and make proper recommendations in how we can solve this problem. Thank you.
Patrick Tanner.
Good evening, thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to say many similar things to what you have just heard, and that is that our community, the citizens of Brisbane, cannot support the SFO roundtable document as it is currently written. There are just simply too many problems with this document. Most significantly is the southbound, the departures that come off of the airport and head south, LA, Las Vegas, Phoenix, Hawaii, Houston, the so-called STIC procedure, we've all heard that acronym. This document adds the number one item as resolution to the problem of the STIC procedures, and I will read from the document. It says, "Aircraft should fly the procedure as charted." We have a letter from Mr. Glenn Martin of the FAA where he says that they are already flying that procedure 99% of the time. How much better can we get? And that's our best recommendation for the noise over Brisbane. Fly the procedure as charted. The problem is the procedure. It's not that they're not flying it. The problem is the procedure, and this document does not adequately address that. Additionally, in this document, the very first item talks about planes coming into land that are currently flying mostly over Woodside. And the language in this document says to maximize that, that procedure's called bodega. There are two bodegas, west and east. Bodega east comes over us. The first six items in this document, five of them state, maximize the use of bodega east. This document is advocating shifting more noise over Brisbane. That's not correct. We're trying to mitigate the problem of Next Gen, but we have more being sent to us. Now, there are some good things in this document, I will say that. The way it approaches nighttime flights is very good. It talks about, when they come off the runway, they currently make a left turn and come over us during the night. It talks about make a right turn and go down the bay. Overwater is where they should be, and that is a very good solution. That's great. But that's only 2% to 3% of the flights that generate the noise that bother us. The remainder of the flights are the STIC procedure during the daytime hours, and it's simply not adequately addressed. Additionally, moving on from that, the FAA says it's going to take one to two years to make whatever changes are recommended in here if they accept those changes. We've already had two years of this noise, and we're being asked to wait maybe another two years before we have any relief. We need relief now. We need a solution now. They need to back off of the Next Gen procedure, roll back to this old procedure with no vectoring. No vectoring, don't divert the flights, but roll back, and that old procedure distributed flights across the entire San Francisco, Brisbane, Daly City border. It wasn't just over us. And so, yes, we get some noise, everybody gets some noise, but not the way we are getting it now. The noise studies clearly show between 2010 and 2015, there is a five-times increase in noise disturbances over the ridge. That's way too, too much. We need to roll back. Finally, this document does not give any direction to the FAA as to what is important. The South Bay Select Committee does. They give them three criteria. How much noise does the, the procedure generate? How many people does it affect? And how often does it affect them? Three very simple criteria upon which the FAA can be held accountable for whatever it is they devise. Cliff, I know you've worked really hard on this entire procedure, and we all appreciate what you have done, and I know in your heart you are trying to do what's best for Brisbane, but this document as it is written does not do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, Joel Diaz.
Good evening, honorable councilmembers, Joel Diaz. Just wanted to speak about the airplane noise as well, and I had, going to reduce my comments because a lot of people covered a lot of different things, but, you know, from a more practical sense, you know, it's kind of how I'm looking at this, and, you know, SFO is the seventh largest airport in the USA, and they have a propensity for sending their flights over Brisbane, and they've done that in the past, they're doing it now, and they're going to continue to do it in the future. And I think we need to have a more effective way of dealing with these issues. Instead of kind of dealing with it on the fly, I don't see that the roundtable is a real effective vehicle to accomplish that. And there have been many comments that support that, the roundtable just isn't an effective way to deal with these noise mitigation problems. In fact, in 2011, the Superior Court Grand Jury did an investigation of airport noise and came up with the same finding, that the roundtable is ineffective in its operations. And I think that it might be time for Brisbane to consider obtaining professional consultants to help us evaluate SFO's traffic needs, what our rights are, how we can better mitigate the noise. The, you know, there's much blame given to the FAA, and it's true that a lot of this rests on their shoulders, and the Next Gen problem is a real problem, but they don't share all of the blame. SFO shares a lot of this blame. They have a hand in what's happening, they are responsible for creating the traffic needs, and per the FAA, the airport and its operations are the root cause of noise problems, and the airport itself is charged with mitigating noise and being a good neighbor. And in that refrain, they try to. And in that refrain, they try to help us at the roundtable with support and consultation. But there is a serious conflict of interest that exists. And it's, it's really questionable how much the SFO is compelled to, to help when this is antithetical. Noise mitigation is antithetical to increasing business operations of the airport. The airport is a business about making money. And mitigating noise is actually antithetical to that. And yet, this is who we're relying on for consultation and for help. So it really makes sense to have an objective third party potentially to help us, to advise us. I definitely agree with the idea that this current proposal should not be submitted. I think it's way too premature. I think we're going to see a lot more developments with NextGen from other cities. Way too premature for us to give up any rights, to sign on to anything. We don't need to. It sounds like a definite increase in noise is going to result. The mitigation that they're offering, they're going to offer it to us anyway, the night flights. And there's no guarantee that it's going to be significant, the mitigation that they're offering. The, they've also suggested, which is really scary, is that the, the, the SFO has suggested that they could take us up to the maximum ceiling in noise level, which is much higher than where we're at now. And I think we should really consider that. If we think it's bad now, they're talking about taking us up to 65 C now. We're at 55, 65, because it's an algorithm, every three decibels, it doubles. So from 55 to 58, it's a doubling of the noise. If we went to 65, which the SFO says they can do to us, it's a 300% increase. So I think it's time that we really get concerned about our predicament and try to come up with another way, another system of dealing with these problems. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Sitraro. I live at 4 Brisbane, 4A Brisbane, or Margaret Avenue, Brisbane. And I want to thank Cliff.
Just move the mic down.
Sorry, I'm short. I want to thank Cliff for all his efforts as well. And thank you, councilmembers, for being attentive to all of our needs here. I've lived in Brisbane seven years now and noise issues really have gone from bad to worse to unbearable. Flights over Brisbane cause negative impacts because of the noise. That's just understood. Health issues, loss of sleep, loss of enjoyment, and potentially for Brisbane homeowners, loss of value on their most expensive asset. I'm not a homeowner. All the work that I've done for noise efforts, I'm a renter. Would I consider buying here if I had the money? No, I would not. That's going to start to impact Brisbane severely. If we adopt the currently outlined plans, the, in the, one of the letter references, there will really only be a miniscule reduction in noise because the major points are addressing nighttime flights. During the daytime, most of the issues addressed are just the low hanging fruit. So really the significant impact of daytime, which doesn't just affect, there's been arguments, oh, well, not as many people are home, they're at work. Well, what about retirees? What about children? What about stay-at-home moms? Everybody has a right to live their life free of the type of noise we've been suffering from. So what we'd be approving is a draft, which even in the last meeting at the, what did they call it, the workshop, there were significant disagreements among the communities about how numerous points were worded. It's a draft document and I think that as a draft, we can't put a stamp of approval on it because we really don't know what it even says yet. The major ask for us, as the concerned citizens of Brisbane, is that we would return to pre-NextGen. And similar to the process in Phoenix, we just roll back. So my feeling is that any long-term ask should be done, as other people have stated, after significant study, real data, and that preferably we get experts to advise us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Peter Grace.
I live in Brisbane. I've, one of the things that happened recently, thank you very much for your time, one of the things that's happened recently is there's a parallel committee in the South Bay. There's a parallel committee in the South Bay looking at aircraft arrivals. This is one of their posters. I wish we'd been creative enough to see it, to show it. It says, "Yes, over the bay, and no, too low and loud," or "loud and low." I'd like to thank Cliff and the council for their attentiveness to our needs. The big picture for me is that the FAA has designed the NextGen procedures to minimize fuel for aircraft and ignore the public health and welfare costs of the citizens underneath. So when the FAA says, "We have reduced, we've looked at the environment and we're reducing pollution," that means they're reducing airline, they're reducing fuel. They are not looking at the public health and welfare costs to the people underneath. We see that the Select Committee recommendations need to include that the FAA redesigned the procedures that put flights over the peninsula to include the criteria of, as Patrick said, the level of noise, the number of people annoyed, and the number of noise events per day. These three criteria were the ones that were discussed at length in the South Bay Arrivals We also need to add further the public health and welfare costs. And the easiest one to understand is from disturbed sleep. One of the things that Clark has recommended was that the flights from Oakland fly out over the Golden Gate and then south. The additional fuel cost from those extra 12 miles is $85. The cost to the communities underneath at night must surely be more than $85 from disturbed We've told the FAA to use the bay to gain height, but we know that height alone is not the panacea to avoid impacting people below. The concern is that the FAA has the design tools, but lack the imagination to use their tools. And there's a great unwillingness on the part of the FAA to be held accountable to the public underneath. We need to reduce aircraft noise to our community immediately and reject the, the executive summary that's been published. And I agree, we need to get a consultant to represent Brisbane, just as Palo Alto has done, to represent the citizens in their fight with the FAA. Thank you very much indeed for your time.
Thank you, Peter.
Mike, I'll have a question for you. I mean, at this time in the agenda, can I address the, you know, what the roundtable's draft response is? Or do I have to wait until Mayor Council matters?
Well, I think what the appropriate procedure would be, if you, if you, if the council wants to allow you to do that, would be to amend the agenda to move that item now. Because right now, the council's approved an agenda with that, toward the end of the agenda. And I know it's kind of putting procedure ahead of reality here, but that's what you would, that's what should happen.
Okay, so is council okay moving? I have a number A under Mayor Council Matters after oral communications, number one.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'll subfavor.
All right.
Hi. Okay, so I'll start with the roundtable meeting. And, you know, and I, the, the letter also that I've given to the council and then I've sent to the noise group reflects what the, the feedback that has been gathered by the community, at least as it, as it pertains to Brisbane, over the years. And, you know, the, you know, the, the statements that have been made are, you know, I totally agree with you. You know, that, that noise is a quality of life issue. You know, it disrupts our day-to-day activities. It has negative effects on our health. And it's, it's just, it's just awful. You know, I, I live in Brisbane, just like all of you. I'm a stone's throw away from Peter Grace's house. So it isn't like, you know, I don't get it. I've been in Brisbane since 1989. Airplanes have been flying over my house since I moved here. But I will agree with all of you that it has gotten worse and that the NextGen system has made things worse. And so because of our congressional members, SPEAR, ESU, and FAR, they are the ones that have the influence on the FAA. No one else has greater influence than Congress. They listen to Congress. They don't listen to cities. They don't listen to consultants. But they listen to congressional members. And because of the great work from our congressional members, they were able to get the FAA to create the initiative. And the initiative states that they will look at changes in height, you know, altitude, airspace, moving waypoints. And so the roundtable was the body that the congressional members chose to represent San Francisco and San Mateo County. The congressional members also created a separate body called the South Bay, the Select Committee for South Bay Arrivals. And that includes some cities in San Mateo County, the southern San Mateo County cities, but mostly Santa Clara and Santa Cruz counties. They didn't have a body to address airplane noise issues. And so when you look at the, the items that are being proposed by the roundtable, they hit on every single item that the people have said they'd like to see change. You know, I mean, we, we don't want to see airplanes flying over our homes at night, right? That disrupts our sleep. It's awful. And so the, the asks are to fly procedures that don't fly over our homes at night. Now, Jadiis, Jadiis Krak, you know, talked about the, I think it was you that, that talked about the, the timeframe, you know, that's considered at night. Now, granted, you know, I'm not an expert in this, right? And, you know, as councilmembers, we're not experts in engineering, we're not experts in finance, we're not experts in, well, I guess Lori is, she's an attorney. But, you know, we, we rely on staff to help us, to, to better understand the issues. And, you know, we do our best, but we rely on them. And that's why I have relied on our staff from the roundtable, from BridgeNet. I've relied on Kathleen Wentworth, who all of you, you know, have, have met. And she is such a, an asset in helping us. I mean, she, she's a former pilot. She gets it. And she gives that dose of reality that we need. And so when you look at night procedures, trying to not fly over Brisbane, there's two procedures in here that, that would help with that. The 050 where they take off and they make a U-turn and go down the bay. The other is to fly up the bay and then out the Golden Gate. The Oakland flights, that's the candle flight. Now, there are two recommendations in here. One is to fly out the Golden Gate. The other is to fly at night, the same procedure, you know, the 050 that comes out of SFO, going down the bay. And actually, there, there's another recommendation for the candle too. And that is for the candle, if it's, if it can't fly out the Golden Gate and it can't fly down the bay, at least fly to its waypoint, which is very, which is, is north of the Oakland Airport, very close to, you know, the south of Market area, and then making that turn. If it's going to go over land, at least it's going to be higher. Right now, the planes, they shortcut and many times go over Brisbane. So the request here really is to not have Oakland flights flying over Brisbane. And then, then there's the stick. And yes, you know, if we went back to pre-NextGen, I know folks on the ridge would like that. They would be happy with that. I know that folks in central Brisbane would not be happy with that because they've been complaining for a very, very long time. And so I don't want to go back to something that, that serves half the community, but not the whole community. We should be looking at this as a Brisbane issue, not ridge and central Brisbane, let's help the ridge, let's, you know, whatever happened to central Brisbane, hey, you know, they bought their houses a long time ago. They, you know, that's, that doesn't help, right? We need a solution for the whole entire city. And so what is being recommended is that to fly the planes over the water as long as possible before making the turn. And, you know, there was a slide that was presented at the last workshop here in Brisbane. And it showed planes, when they made the turn, they were going over Brisbane, Daly City, and San Francisco. And so there was a distribution of flights that seemed fair. And they would fly then in that distribution of fairness across to the ocean and then down the coast, instead of flying down the peninsula and disrupting people in Pacifica. And so, but that's the short term. What the long term is, is to take the stick waypoint that's near our shoreline and move it as far east over the ocean, over the bay as possible. You know, Peter showed that, that picture. Yes, over the bay. No, low over our homes. Absolutely. And that is, that's what the roundtable is proposing. You know, I, I know that, you know, the, there's this whole thing about, you know, the election being rigged and then there's this distrust of government and, and all that. But, you know, here at the local level, we are, we are doing our best and we are sincere about trying to make things better. You know, we did not create the flight procedures. The FAA did. And when they created NextGen, they didn't consult with, with communities. They did it on their own. And they admitted that, you know what, that was wrong. And that's why the initiative was created, to give us an opportunity. And so what I'm asking all of you is to support these things that are in this document. They will make things better. Will they, you know, make things, you know, in a giant way better? Is this, you know, one, you know, giant leap for Brisbane? Absolutely not. But it is, I think, some significant steps forward. And, and one of the things that is included in here, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it is a big leap and it will take time, but to fly those stick procedures during the daytime out the Golden Gate, not over Brisbane. That is in here. And, and then there's one last thing that came up during the technical working group meeting. We know that a lot of the flights that are going over Brisbane head out to Vegas and Phoenix and Texas and places like that. It's like, well, what the hell? Why should a plane fly up, you know, fly north over our town and then go to those destinations? You know, in the past, planes that were flying to those destinations used to fly east and then south. And so the letter that I, you know, that's before the council, the draft letter, recognizes that. You know, go back to that traditional way of flying those planes. Don't fly them over us. Fly them over the bay and then, you know, when they're high enough, send them south. And that will eventually be in the roundtable document on the second. So if we do not embrace this document from the FAA, I mean, from the roundtable, that will eventually go to the congressional members. The roundtable is just providing information to the congressional members. The congressional members will then give a document to the FAA. If we are not supporting those changes, then we will continue to get what we are getting today. And things will not get better. The FAA, I mean, the roundtable's been around for 35 years. This is, you know, not a thing that you're locked in. This is a long-term, it's a long-term battle, right? This is a long-term, it's a long-term battle, right? And so, we will, will get some, hopefully, some short-term relief, then some midterm relief, but there will always be things that we'll have to keep addressing and we'll have to keep fighting. And that's why you have a round table. But, but, but don't, don't, don't discard all the work that has gone into this and say we don't accept it and say that it'll be bad, because it will not be worse. The only thing that'll be worse is doing nothing. And so, I, I hope that, um, you know, I, granted, this letter is a draft letter, and what I'd like to do is sit down with the group, if there is language in it that needs to be massaged. I had told Peter, when I talked to him yesterday, I said, you know, this letter will not move forward unless the citizens embrace this. It won't do it, right? I mean, I'm not going to waste my time, you know, presenting something that the community's not going to support. I, you know, and that isn't how I operate. I mean, I, I like to engage. I want to empower, and I think that the best document that moves forward, you know, has your blessing. So, um, you know, and, and just one last thing. I know I've been on the soapbox for a little while here, you know, about getting, uh, you know, a consultant, you know, to help. And, you know, like I said, this is a long-term thing. You know, after this process, you know, if we feel that, that, that we need to spend the money, then, then, you know, we'll, we'll do it. You know, the city of Palo Alto spent $200,000 on their consultant. Now, granted, they don't have the round table. They're not a member. You know, we're able to use our consultant to get information and, and, you know, Peter and, and others have, have asked for data, and I, I have asked for data too, uh, to help understand what's going on. So, um, but we need, we need to, to make a decision soon. November 2nd is, is the date of the round table meeting, and, and that's when the document's going to be moving forward. And I, I would hate to take out all the things that would reduce noise in our city, uh, you know, because, uh, I, I don't know. I'm, sometimes I'm, I'm trying to understand and I, and, and I need to be a better listener, uh, I'm sure. But hopefully, in the end, we, we can, we can make it work. All right. Thank you for that, council members.
If I may, please, we need to be able to respond to that. This is what we're talking about, that you're not qualified to make these decisions and you're factually incorrect about what you just told us. There hasn't been enough data.
Have them come up here.
For the second, this is what we're talking about. With all due respect, I would appreciate a chance for some listening.
We're not voting, right?
You know, um, you know, we're not making any decision. This is just for your.
It's just an update, right?
Review. Again, you know, I'm going to meet with the, the group and we will go over these things. I appreciate your, your perspective, Mr. Dole.
I just want to clarify, we don't want you to take action on November 2nd or another city council meeting.
Okay. Again, you're, you're entitled to your opinion, sir. Thank you very much. So.
If, if I could, Cliff, what, um, you're alluding to November 2nd as kind of a drop-dead date? Is that, is that?
It is. So, the South Bay Select Committee will be making their recommendations, um, very, very soon. Maybe before the 2nd, um, but sometime in, in November, I believe. So, the FAA is expecting both bodies, the congressional members are expecting both bodies to submit their work, their recommendations. Again, you know, all the recommendations that are being presented are to reduce, you know, you know, to have planes be directed away from Brisbane, or if they are going to fly over our city, that they fly at a higher altitude. There is any, isn't anything in here that recommends allowing planes to fly, you know, to increase the amount of flights over, over Brisbane.
So, the round table has to come up?
That's supposed.
Can, can, hold on. Can the round table, is the round table has to have that recommendation November 2nd?
So.
I guess.
You know, yeah, so the, the round table does not need to have a recommendation from the council. It doesn't, it doesn't need to have a recommendation from the people. However, I think it is very important that, that the round table has that.
Well, I mean, if you don't, well, I guess, if you don't do anything November 2nd, is something going to be adopted, is my question? If, as a recommendation to Congresswoman Spear's office to, that, that's who we're talking about, right?
So, um.
That would go to the FAA.
So, the round table has been working on this document. It's a response document. The round table has received feedback from all of the cities in San Mateo County as well as San Francisco. They've been, you know, they have been providing feedback, uh, you know, working with the consultant, working with the noise abatement office to gather data to support their recommendations, working with Jackie Spear's, um, staff person, Kathleen Kennedy. If, you know, I mean, the stick procedure and the candle procedure just don't affect Brisbane. I mean, they affect other cities too. And so, um, you know, folks in Pacifica would like to see the planes fly over the water, over the bay longer so that by the time they make it over to Pacifica, they're higher in the sky. You know, I, again, I mean, I, I just think it's such a disappointment if, if we do not recommend planes flying over the bay longer before they come over our cities.
We have to have a recommendation November 2nd, though. That, that's the question. Do we have to have it November 2nd? I think that's.
So, I, I mean, sure, the body of the round table could say, we're not ready. They could say that. But I, I, you know, I mean, and that could happen.
Yeah.
You know, just like, you know, something is before the council and we're expected to make a vote on it. And we take feedback and then we decide we're not going to make a vote on it. But we've been dealing with this for a long time, and I think that the round table probably will make a decision. Again, I, I, I think it would be sad for our community if we took these things out.
With all due respect, you're the chairman of the round table and it's up to you and you're the one pushing this for the second. There are other cities that want to delay it. I plead for the record, just, just tell them through, please. Please, we need you to help us.
You know, you're, you know, this is something that someone has said that is no city in the county has told me to postpone moving forward with the, uh, response from the round table. In fact, most cities that I, you know, representatives have told me, they want to move forward because they're tired of just all of the, you know, talking back and forth and not doing anything. They want to see something moved forward so that results can happen. In, in some sense, a lot of these things that we've talked about, we've been working on for a long time. The initiative, because of the bureaucracy of it, dealing with the FAA, has delayed moving forward with, um, you know, working with our local FAA folks to make changes. So, again, you know, I, I will work with the group, you know, I, I, you know, if we, again, if we don't move forward with something, it's, we, we will lose out on opportunity to, to make some changes.
Okay. I just had one other question, Cliff. This, this next gen procedure, it sounds like it was a shifting of noise? Is that, is that factual? I mean, it sounds like, that's what it sounds like to me.
You know, so.
They admitted it, uh, increased the noise in Brisbane, and, and so it is kind of a shifting of noise, right?
Yeah. It's been, it's been difficult to, to kind of pinpoint where the noise increase has come. You know, when you look at, um, you know, pre-next gen, uh, the, a lot of the planes were vectored over central Brisbane, but we're still getting a tremendous amount of flights over central Brisbane. So where, where are the additional flights coming from?
Yeah.
And so, that's why we're looking at flights that maybe in the past flew east and then south, like to destinations like Vegas and Phoenix.
All that data is available, though, right? All that data is available.
And so, and so what we're asking is that we, you know, we look at that and request that those, those destinations fly across the bay. Don't fly north over our cities. That, that is a, a request.
Do we have the data that shows that they did that? I mean, that, that's what I mean.
Yeah, you know, and we are, I've asked the noise abatement office to gather that data, and that was asked, um, prior to the technical working group meeting. That was at the airport last week, and then after the meeting, I asked for it again.
So, will they have that data before November 2nd?
Yes. Well, um, it's, it, you know, if you're going to make a recommendation, you want to back it up. And so, if you're going to make a recommendation that, hey, you should be flying this, you have to show that this was something that was done in the past. Why isn't it being flown that way today? And so, by using that data, which, um, I believe is available, I mean, I, without looking at it myself, I can't tell you, yes, it is here, and I won't make that type of assumption. But I, I, I feel fairly confident that, that that does exist. Again, you know, we're trying to have flights from Oakland not fly over Brisbane. I, I, you know, that's, that's, I mean, I don't know if anyone can argue against that, you know?
Here, I got something to say.
I'll get you in a little bit, Tony.
So, so the South Bay Select Subcommittee is working separately, but in conjunction with the SFO Roundtable for the Santa Clara County's, um, concerns, along with San Francisco and San Mateo County concerns. Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Um, not exactly. So, the congressional members, um, created the two bodies to gather data for them. The SFO Roundtable deals with San Mateo County, San Francisco, the South Bay Select, the Select Committee for South Bay Arrivals, portions of San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, and Santa Cruz. There is a little bit of overlap with the southern part of San Mateo County, but for the most part, the two are focused on their.
Different issues.
Yeah.
But they're planning to bring these two bodies' reports together so that the congressional representatives can bring them at one time to the FAA. And that's why you're concerned about bringing your, the SFO Roundtable recommendation at the same time or before or during the same process as the South Bay Select Committee.
I, I don't believe that they're going to mesh the two bodies of work together. I think they will stay separate. I mean, granted, the congressional members could change their minds, but at this point, they have opted to keep them separate, even with the areas that, that overlap. However, um, from what I've been told, the areas that do overlap, they're basically the same asks. Um, yeah, so, um, the request is, is pretty much the same from both bodies in regards to the area that, uh, that they do overlap.
Okay. So, when you said that the South Bay Select Subcommittee was going to be making a recommendation on, or be, around November 2nd, um, they don't meet at the same time or with you.
No.
At the round table. It's more of a timing issue for when this body of work should be in to the, um, to the, to the congressional representatives so that they can forward it on to the FAA.
That is correct.
Okay. And the letter that we have, that you brought for us to look at and possibly discuss, or not discuss, but, um, to give to us, to, to let us know, this, we just got today, correct?
Yes, I, I just finished it this afternoon.
So, I'm not sure, you know, how much discussion we can have when it's under council, council issues, and I certainly know we can't have a back and forth with the public on this at this time. I think it's, it's good that you're willing to meet with the public and the concerned citizens groups, um, before you finish reviewing the SFO Roundtable report and get their feedback. That's something that I haven't delved into and seen the SFO Roundtable report, and that wasn't brought forward to us either at this point. So, I don't know if that helps the community on having feedback with you before making a recommendation. And I know that, that what the public was saying was that they thought that we needed to hire a consultant and get more information before we make any recommendations. And you have the feeling that we don't, at this point, have time to do that. We'll miss the opportunity.
That is correct.
So, I mean, I don't want us to risk violating the Brown Act, the more that we discuss this without really being, we can't really have, to my understanding, like a back and forth with the public at this time, right? So, it sounds like really there needs to be a deeper discussion between you and the community members that have voice concerns. So, we probably should take it offline and arrange a time, you know, in the next few days where that can happen, and you can sort out the language and discuss the concerns on a more one-on-one basis, because right now, I don't think that we can actually really address that, right?
I believe that is the case, yes. So, you know, I.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I would. And, you know, I, I appreciate all the, the public's input and comments, and I did receive emails in the last week or so, and I apologize for those I didn't get back to yet. I feel like, you know, this is a lot of technical information, and I want to be able to understand it, and, you know, the suggestion of having an expert or a consultant, um, you know, I, I think that might be worth considering, because for us to look at this and say, yes, this sounds like a good idea, it's hard, because we don't have that technical expertise. And, you know, I want to be able to, I don't want to miss an opportunity to give input, but at the same time, I don't want to give the wrong input. And, um, you know, without, without having that background, it's hard for us to really know what's going to reduce the noise or make it worse. And, you know, we all want the same goal. We want to reduce the airport noise. The question is, how do we do it? So, um, I'm wondering if we might want to create an ad hoc Subcommittee, um, or, you know, some, some mechanism so that this can get fleshed out further. And, I mean, I know that you're looking at it, you're working with the community, but this is something that keeps coming back before the council, and to be honest, I don't feel like we have that technical expertise to know what is the right procedure to recommend. I do know the flights have gotten worse. I remember specifically around two years ago, when I started hearing the noise increase, and every night, it's hard to sleep. So, I'm very well aware of the, the issues. And so, I'll, I'll defer to you, since you're the one more involved, but those are, those are my concerns.
Well, you know, I mean, I think that, that would be a good thing. You know, we've had two workshops. Council members could have attended the workshops, but, you know, but maybe you're out of town or something.
Yeah, well, it was a Jewish holiday.
So, what, what we did was, we did, um, videotape the last workshop, and I highly recommend that the council members watch it to educate yourself. There was a recent technical working group meeting, you know, at the round table, and I guess, you know, I could have informed all of you, um, you know, directly, and I apologize for that. There is also the round table meeting on the 2nd, and we will go through these things, you know, and maybe not in the same detail as we did the last technical work, uh, technical working group meeting, but at least you will understand what is being presented. And, you know, I mean, I think if, once you understand the information. I think if, once you understand the information, um, if you still feel that these recommendations would be harmful to Brisbane, then I, I, I would like for you to speak up at the Roundtable meeting. Um, I, I, I think you're right. I think it would be good to have two people from the council rather than having one, getting, getting all the emails and things like that. I think that is helpful. Um, so I, I, I think we should. But again, we're under a, a timeline and, um, it, and so, um, you know, this isn't, this isn't something that, you know, you're locked in forever and it's, you know, it's a continuing thing and we will just continue to, to work on it to make things better.
Well, I mean, you requested data about, about the noise increase of flights. That hasn't been presented. How can we make, um, a solid recommendation without that data? You know, you know what I mean? Is, is anytime we make a decision on a council, a lot of it's, it's, most of it's data-driven. And I think that's the same thing with this. And we're looking at procedures and stuff and you certainly probably understand these a lot more than I do and, and the rest of the councils, since you've really kind of been up to snuff on it.
Yeah.
Um, but I think the citizens group also has an understanding of it too. And they're probably more obsessed with it than anybody I've ever seen, you know?
Dedicated.
And I, and I'd be willing to bet that they spend more time on this than, than you or anybody else on the.
Yeah, I'm sure they have, absolutely.
And so, you know, I, I, I would say that there's probably some credence to, to what they're saying and, you know, us as, as council members do represent them and, and we need to listen to that and.
Uh, you know, absolutely.
And we don't have, you know, that tactical expertise. And I think it's important, but yet now time is of the essence. And, and I, I, I think, you know, that it's important to get the data before making the decision and maybe talk with the, your colleagues on the, on the Roundtable that, hey, you know, we need to get some stuff to really come with a recommendation. We have some things in a draft that we like or, you know, talk with the group that, you know, that we can kind of come to consensus with, but also we need that data to have it driven to really kind of drive it home that, hey, our noise has increased. Has this been a shift in noise? Because, you know, back in the eighties, when we had that agreement that it stated back then that no noise shall be shifted to any community. It's obviously kind of been shifted over to us, if, if not somebody else. And if that's the case, they're in violation of a policy, you know, that, that, you know, this next-gen procedure, they totally violated everything. And so we need to kind of gather all that, grasp all that into, you know what I mean? Something that's very comprehensive that, that we kind of all agree on, that we can get into the short timeframe. But November 2nd is a little bit too short, I think. Cause, you know, we've talked about it numerous times and I think, you know, if we can get it to maybe December or something like that, where we can kind of get something cobbled, we get the information. If we're not getting the information, then we're being stonewalled by SF Airport, who's supposed to provide the information, right? And who are the consultants we rely upon? But they really don't give a rat's about Brisbane. And we know that.
Mm-hmm.
They don't care. And I think somebody said, maybe it was Tony, that they're in business to bring in airlines to fly planes out and that's how they make their money. And, you know, they don't really, really care about that, about who the effect and the pilots, you know, in the air, how, how all that works is still, still kind of baffles me, you know? I mean, uh, it's really the FAA and TRACON who direct these flights. They can do a heck of a lot better job than what they do. You see that in some of the airports. I mean, the, the bay that we have, we should not have the noise problems that we do have with, with the San Francisco Bay. It just shouldn't, shouldn't be happening, even with three airports, you know? It's, it's just ridiculous. And, and so I think, you know, we, we probably are getting shafted here to a degree. And I think the more data we have, that, you know, that we're able to put something together to comprehensive that you can say, no, hey, this is, this is what, this is where we're coming from. This noise was shifted to us. This needs to change and you need to get it out at night and, and utilize the bay more. And you know what I mean? But, but to have the data to, to prove that, because without the data, it's just, you know, the, the wording going back and forth. And we're relying upon the fox that's guarding the hen house to provide the data. And, and it's, you know what I, you know what I mean? Is, is that if they're not providing that, that, that stuff is recorded on a daily basis. It's recorded. You go there, you see it there. It, it, they should be able to run a report in 24 hours, have something, here, here's the data, you know? You know, and crunch it in many different ways. So if we're, we're not getting it, then, then they're, they're just playing us, you know? And then saying, okay, come up with something, you know? Come up with your recommendations, you know? And we're like, okay, well, how about this? And you don't want to.
Uh, you know, I, I'm, you know, I definitely, you know, get where you're coming from, Clark. And, and, you know, we definitely should, you know, have, have data to support, you know, changes that we, we would like to see.
Yeah.
Um, you know, um, you know, when you look at, you know, the pre next gen, you know, the, the SEPTI was the waypoint, which was about a half a mile, uh, to the north of the current waypoint, but it was closer to the shore. Um, and we know that prior to next gen, planes were being vectored a lot and coming over our town, causing noise problems. I mean, the noise issue in central Brisbane has been going on much longer than just a couple of years.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, so what is being recommended is taking the, the waypoint from where SEPTI was and actually moving it as far east over the water as possible. Um, so if you have a situation that I would think is pretty obvious would be better, do you need a boatload of data to tell you that flying over the water is better than flying closer over your house? Uh, you know, I mean, so I, I mean, I understand, you know, trying to get to the point of, you know, how, how the airplane noise was moved. I, I totally agree with you on that and we should work hard to get that data. But I think we can also use common sense and say, move the waypoint over the water farther from our homes is better than having the waypoint closer to our homes.
So you're suggesting like a two-pronged approach here?
Well, for this particular process, doing those types of steps. But I do recommend continuing to gather the data. And if, you know, if we are not satisfied with the data that we could get from the consultant, remember, we all pay to be part of the Roundtable.
Mm-hmm.
Palo Alto doesn't have a Roundtable. Thus, they, and they have deep pockets, they wrote the $200,000 check to have the consultant.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the consultants are paid by the hour. You give them a request, give them another request, give them, and you don't, there is so much data that could be asked for. I mean, the bill could be huge. And then you ask, okay, well, what are you trying to achieve? We already know there's a problem. The FAA has already recognized that there is a problem. I, but I do think that we need to have data that, that shows where the, how the noise was moved over to us. I think that, that's very, very important.
Yeah. Cause I mean, cause that's a, that's a total violation of agreement from the eighties and there's nothing to amend that, you know? I mean, that was.
I agree. Looking at the flights out of Oakland, what the Roundtable is recommending, what's in this document is to have this, the candle flights not fly over our town. I mean, that, that's what it's recommending. And if, if they have to fly over their town, over our city when they're making a turn, at least be, go up to the candle waypoint. What they've done is that they, they shortcut that, um, waypoint, which is farther north from the Oakland Airport, um, forty, they, they shortcut it 64% of the time.
Yeah.
Excuse me, 54% of the time, right? And that's with a one-mile radius around that waypoint. So, I mean, they are just absolutely awful with that and they acknowledge that. And because when those planes are not going up to that waypoint, many times they, 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 uh, come over us. And we're saying, don't do that. Fly up to the waypoint and then go across, which means that they will go over San Francisco, not Brisbane. So really, when you get right down to it, it's the issue with the stick during the daytime. And the, you know, what is being recommended is that there is a fair distribution of those, of those flights when they go through the waypoint. But if we can have them fly, you know, further east and then cut over, that would be great for long-term. We're, we're trying to see if we can get them to go out the Golden Gate, not even fly over our city.
Right.
So I mean, I, I mean, you know, if, if someone had a different recommendation, I, I would love, I would love to hear it. Something that, that is different.
I got it.
Okay. So, uh, we got some other things on our agenda, so I think we better just, but you know what? What I'm going to do, you know, I, I'm going to meet with all you and then we'll.
Then they're not going to hear it.
Okay. You know what? I'll give you 30 seconds, please.
I'd like to know what problems Congress has solved lately. That's number one. And number two, before anybody tries to solve any problem, I think you ask the city attorney or anybody else, Randy Bro, they'll tell you, they like to have the facts first before they start building a house and deciding, uh, what kind of curtains to hang when they haven't even built the house yet, or solve any other kind of problem. If you're an attorney, you need to have all the facts and what they call it, discovery, before you build your brief and try your case. I just can't fathom how you could get to this point as chairman of that committee after two, three, four years sitting on it and not have this data and not come to your fellow, um, council members and say, I'm trying and they're stonewalling me. I can't get the information I need and these people are hanging us up. You know, it's just ridiculous.
Thank you. Okay. So.
We need to move on.
Yeah, we need to move on.
So Cliff, I, I still would like for you to work with the citizens.
I am going to work. I'll, I'll send out the email. We'll get together and I know it's frustrating. I know you feel like, hey, the FAA is putting, you know, the responsibility on you. And in that, you know, we don't have expertise to do that. But again, we've been working with our Roundtable consultant, Kathleen Wentworth from the airport.
Mark.
Yeah, okay.
And as for the expert consult, consultant, I, I think, you know, I'd like to hear more about, maybe we can have staff look into, um, a scope of work and proposed costs so we can actually consider that item.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be fun.
Cause otherwise we don't know the cost.
Okay.
What the, what, what the benefit would be. So I'd like to consider that at a.
Okay.
We should let staff explore something.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move on to the proclamation that we have here. Want to recognize that October 2016 is Fire Prevention Month. I'm going to read through this thing. All right. So, "A proclamation of the City of Brisbane declaring October 16th as Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the City of Brisbane, Cali- Brisbane, California and the North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Brisbane. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, but locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas from fires kill thousands of people in the United States each year, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to over 370,000 home fires. And whereas working, smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in homes, in home fires in half, and three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working. And whereas when smoking, whereas when smoke alarms should have operated but did not so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected or dead. And whereas half of home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority recommend and request residents to install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority recommend and request residents to install smoke alarms and other devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority recommend and request that residents practice a home fire escape plan, making them prepared and therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority are dedicated to reducing light, reducing the occurrence of home fires and associated deaths and injuries through a public education and community outreach. And whereas Brisbane residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date," effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Therefore, I, Clifford R. Lenz, Mayor of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim October 16th as Fire Prevention Month throughout the, throughout this city. I urge all the people of Brisbane to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each smoke, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home, including the basement, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of North County Fire Authority during Fire Prevention Month 2016. And I know that we have a representative from North County Fire.
Especially an insurance man.
Mayor Lenson, members of the City Council, thank you so much for helping to promote fire safety in our community by declaring this month, uh, Fire Prevention Month here in the City of Brisbane. We really appreciate it on behalf of Ron Myers and the entire North County Fire Authority. Um, this is a very busy, busy month for us and as well as fire departments all throughout the United States. It's Fire Prevention Month through the National Fire Protection Association and FPA. And the, uh, theme this year, "Don't Wait, Check the Date," which is the promoting of people checking the dates on their smoke alarms. If they're over 10 years old, replacing them with the new smoke alarms that are on the market that have a 10-year battery. And this just helps create more reliability. Instead of having to rely on people to change their batteries every year, you have a 10-year battery, which is more reliable and more chances of it working in an actual fire. We're really trying to promote people to check the dates on them, get rid of the old nine-volt battery smoke alarms and putting in the, the new 10-year battery with the latest technology and smoke detection. Also this month, it's a very busy month for us. We've done our open houses, which I know some of you probably came to here at Brisbane Station 81. And we also had, uh, three of our daily city stations open as well as a Pacific Station as well this past Saturday. Um, our firefighters have also been very busy this, this month in helping out one of our very vulnerable populations, our children, by going to all the schools and educating them on the importance of installing smoke alarms and fire safety in the home. So again, I want to thank all of you so much for promoting Fire Prevention Month here in the City of Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got, I got a question for you.
I got it.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, where, where can you buy those, um, smoke alarms with a 10-year battery?
They're, they're mostly at all major hardware stores and Costcos and places like that.
Brisbane Hardware.
Brisbane Hardware, okay.
Thank you, Captain.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
All right. All right. Now I get to do a fun proclamation. A very, very important person in our community who, uh, always steps up to the plate, you know, whenever there's a helping hand that, that, you know, needs some assistance. So, um, this is the proclamation for our Volunteer of the Year Award. So, um, this is to recognize Sue Cochran as the 2016 Volunteer of the Year Award. And let me read it. "Whereas Sue Cochran is a member of the Brisbane Lions Club and a Brisbane resident. And whereas Sue Cochran is known throughout the community for her contributions in many areas and is devoted to personally improving the quality of life for Brisbane residents. And whereas Sue Cochran has donated countless hours." Sue Cochran has donated countless hours as an active Lions Club member and part of the Derby Volunteer Team. She has led the Makers Club for Littman's After-School Program and volunteers at Littman's Career Day. And whereas Sue Cochran swept the streets of visitation, cleaned up around town, and has taken Brisbane beautification into her own hands. She assisted neighbors with landscaping and is always the first to volunteer to help a senior in need. And whereas Sue Cochran always extends a helping hand and acts with the purpose of community in mind while giving selflessly to others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that after many decades of dedicated volunteering, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Sue Cochran for her tireless spirit, great energy, and passion for serving others. Congratulations to Sue Cochran on being named the City of Brisbane Volunteer of the Year." And, yeah, let's get together with all the council members here.
Should we come down?
Yeah, why don't you come on down? That'd be nice.
Have they done this before?
Every year.
All right.
Oh, no, this means she has to stay till the end of our meeting.
Yeah, you do get a rebuttal.
Is that punishment or award? She's gonna give you an award, better than a reward.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could we move items B and C ahead of A for the presentations?
Yes, we can do that. That would be nice. Okay, so, do we need to do a motion, Clay, to move it? Okay. So, item B under Presentations, Mosquito Abatement District Update and Infectious Diseases. So, did you wanna make, give us a little update? And then we could also just honor you for all the work that you've done through the years, too, Bob.
Thank you. I'm Bob Maynard, I'm the trustee for Brisbane, for a few more days, anyway, on the Samatelle County Mosquito Abatement District. I have brought along with me this evening, Chindi Pevee. Dr. Pevee is an entomologist and head of the district, and has a PhD from UC Berkeley. And she has helped to put together an outstanding laboratory at the district, it's one of the best in the state. So, she's gonna make a presentation.
Thank you, Bob.
First, I'd really like to acknowledge Bob Maynard. He's been a huge asset to the district, and I want to thank the city for sending him to us. We're really, really sorry to see him go. I've known Bob for twelve years as lab director and now as manager. He's been the chair of our finance committee and has really guided the district through quite a bit, and I, we've really appreciated everything he's done for us.
Nice, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna try and make this as fast as possible so that you can get back to the rest of your meeting. I talked a couple of years ago to you, and I think you had a presentation last year. So, this, we've been in business for a hundred years. Our main thing is mosquitoes, but we also do control of yellow jackets, if you have ground nesting yellow jackets in your yard. We also do surveillance for ticks, and we give information to homeowners about rats. I just wanted to really quickly go over the diseases that we're looking into. The main one is West Nile virus, and the number that you see up there is the number to call if you have, if you find a dead crow. We really appreciate it if you will do that, if it's a fresh dead crow. This is one of the ways we find West Nile virus in the county. So, the crows are the reservoirs, and then mosquitoes could transmit the disease to humans. This is just a brief picture of the state of California, so you can see Southern California, the Bay Area, and the Central Valley. Our area is green because we haven't had any human cases, but we do have West Nile virus activity. And then this is just real briefly, in the upper left-hand corner, you see the activity this year, a lot of it was down in Menlo Park and Atherton, but in 2014, two years ago, we had activity throughout the state, including up here near Brisbane. So, this is where we've found positive crows and positive mosquitoes infected with West Nile virus. I also wanted to just briefly touch on Zika virus, because it's been a big concern for people. The disease, as you probably have heard, is very mild, it's just flu-like symptoms, but it causes severe birth defects, microcephaly, which is a, babies born with a very small brain. It's transmitted by what we call eighties, invasive eighties mosquitoes. So, there's two kinds of mosquitoes, eighties egypti and eighties albopictus, which are invasive in that they're not native to this area, they're not native to California. It's also can be sexually transmitted. As a mosquito abatement district, our concern is that that means that there can be other cases, and the mosquito picks it up from humans. The only place in the United States that we have currently got local transmission from mosquitoes is in Florida, and if you could look in the upper right-hand corner, those two maps of the United States are maps of the possible distribution of the vectors. So, only recently have we gotten these vectors in California. We don't currently have them in San Mateo County, but we have had them introduced in the past. Okay, so, in our county, the good thing is that right now, we don't have any local transmission. Right now, we don't have either of those two mosquitoes. We did have an introduction of them in Menlo Park in 2013, and it took us two years to get rid of it. We were able to identify it very early and through massive inspections in that city, month after month after month, and getting rid of sources and tipping over containers and treating things for, with larbsides, we were, it looks like we've eliminated it. And so, we haven't had any more sightings since May of 2015, but it could get introduced again at any time. There've been eleven cases of Zika in this county, but all were acquired someplace else, outside the United States. These are the two mosquitoes we're worried about, and this is showing the places that they've been found in California. You see the two red dots right now, one in San Mateo County and one in Alameda County, but both of those have been eliminated, so we don't currently have it in either of those Our big concern is that these are found in small containers, they're found in empty tires that fill up with water, little fountains, in cemeteries, and the things that you put flowers in, and buckets and things in the backyard. So, what we'd really like people to do is, now that it's starting to rain, make sure you don't have things that will hold water in your backyard. This didn't used to be our biggest source of mosquitoes, but it's our greatest fear now for these two mosquitoes. So, it's really important that citizens help us by making sure they don't have little containers of water in the yard.
If it's a fountain that's, it's just still water, right? Or if it's a fountain that's...
If it's circulating, it should be okay. If you're getting bitten by mosquitoes, you can call us, and then we can find out if there's something going on.
Okay.
But generally, if it's moving, it's okay. We also distribute mosquito fish, so if it's a permanent source of water, we can bring mosquito fish up there and put fish in there, and then they'll eat any of the mosquitoes that show up. And I just wanted, I'm not gonna go through this whole slide, but I wanted to emphasize, we use integrated controls, so we try to reduce the sources, we treat with bacteria to the larval stage, we use a variety of methods, and we also do a lot of surveillance so that we can target our treatment where the mosquitoes are located. And then, real quickly, I wanted to go through the rodent-borne diseases. The two that are important are hantavirus, San Bruno Mountain, we have found it in wild mice on San Bruno Mountain, about ten percent of the mice. The, the concern, it causes severe pneumonia, but you wouldn't get that just hiking on San Bruno Mountain. That would be if your house got infected, or you had a shed that had mice in it, and you get a buildup of nesting material, and then you go in that enclosed space and breathe deeply. So, the best thing you can do is make sure you keep mice out of your house and out of your outbuildings, and then we do surveillance to see where we're finding it. And then bubonic plague, and again, this is something that's been on San Bruno Mountain for years, but it's at a very, very low level. And again, just walking on San Bruno Mountain, you're fine. The concern would be if it got into the rat population, and that, with plague, the concern is fleas jumping off of rats that die from the disease and jumping onto you. So, we haven't found any of it on San Bruno Mountain this year. There's a couple of old sites that have been there for years and years that we periodically find it in, one being behind Olivet Cemetery near the Franciscan Trailer Park, which isn't in Brisbane, it's on the other side of the mountain. The other being up in what we call Saddleback, which is that little parking lot where the county park is, up at the top of the mountain. And then, just real quickly, I wanted to touch on the highlights of what the district is doing. In Brisbane, you pay a parcel tax of seventeen dollars and seventy-six cents per year for our services. We haven't, we have a balanced budget, we haven't increased the tax. We could increase it by the cost of living, but even that is not, not very much. You're welcome to call us at any time for services, if you're getting bitten by mosquitoes, if you'd like advice on rats, if you have yellow jackets at your house. And then, some of the other things, we've actually funded our, we, our OPEB stands for Retiree Medical Benefits. By law, you have a, you have to declare a liability, so we have that fully funded now. We also have put us a fund into the SAMSSER Pension Fund to bring down our pension liabilities, which has decreased our pension costs substantially. The board is regularly going over the policies, and we have an annual independent audit, so we've had a clean audit for the last four years. Thank you. Let me just show, this is all of our phone numbers and websites, if people want information. All right, thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, any questions for Cindy?
No, no, not for Dr. ...
Yeah, we've had Bob give us these updates on a pretty regular basis, and so I feel like we have a pretty good education of what's going on, at least in our part of Samatelle County, in regards to, you know, things like mosquitoes and plague and, and some of these other viruses that are carried by, you know, critters.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for giving me the time to talk to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, and...
Thanks for the kind words for Bob, too, 'cause we're certainly gonna miss, miss his annual presentations, and, you know, I hope that we find another volunteer who's willing to do the work that Bob has done, you know, through the years, you know? He's really put forth a monumental effort and gone through some rough times with the mosquito district, you know? So, I mean, or the harbor district, and, you know, there's interesting stuff that's gone on, and, you know, you're really, one of those people that was a catalyst, I think, for the district, you know?
Yeah, his guidance in the last few years has really helped us recover from that, and he's been hugely valuable. So, thank you for...
Yeah, yeah, thank you for showing that one slide regarding the financials. Yeah, that was not a very, you know, high point in the district's existence, and I'm glad, you know, folks like Bob were able to, you know, to be there to turn things around. And I'm assuming, Bob, that that bill died from Assemblyman, Member Gordon?
No, it's actually been passed.
It did pass?
Yes.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
It may damage the ability of our board to think to function effectively in the future.
It passed, but it would require a majority of the cities to pass a resolution saying that they don't want...
I'm gonna bring it up shortly.
Oh, so, let him talk.
Okay. All right, yeah, no, Bob, go right ahead, sir.
I just wanted to mention that the Gordon bill did pass. It, the arguments for it were that having a much smaller board would enable better control, financial controls. I want to mention about that, that the same year we had our fraud, there were two other frauds in San Mateo County, both with five-person boards.
Okay.
So, complaining about our twenty-person board was irrelevant. The other thing is, there was a complaint about the cost. The cost of operating our board is about twenty-two thousand dollars a year for that whole board.
Yes.
And in return for that, we have three CPAs, a couple of public, public health physicians, public health nurses, all types of talented individuals. We're getting a real bargain for that very small expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
Finally, it's been requested that I be replaced as quickly as possible, so that we can have a quorum, quorum regularly.
Okay.
So, that's a personal request.
Yeah.
My last shot. Do any of you have any last questions of me?
Anybody here?
So, Bob, for the members of the public at home watching, how many years have you served on the mosquito abatement board?
A little, twelve.
Twelve years? Well, we really appreciate all your hard work, and it's with regret, regret that we accept your resignation. And we put out that call to the public to find someone else who may have a small amount of the same kind of dedication that you've had to the district and to this council over the last twelve years.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
It's been a pleasure serving in the city.
Yes, thank you so much, Bob. Very nice, Karen. Okay.
Thank you, Bob. And that was, we were gonna...
We're on to item C.
That was also, yeah, okay.
So, item C is Seton Medical Center presentation by John Forelli, Chief Executive Officer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is John Forelli, 142 Red Hood Court, right here in Brisbane.
That's right, Brisbane resident.
And here tonight to talk about Seton Medical Center. Before I begin my presentation, I would like to thank the residents of the city for their support over the past couple of years. You know, the hospital's gone through a pretty significant turnaround, and we appreciate the support that the members of the city have given us, and, and it's been difficult for the employees and the physicians who work there, and I'm, hopefully, you'll see we're in a real turnaround and anxious to move forward. So, I'd like to take you back, I guess this is under my control, to 2015, when, on December 14th, the Daughters of Charity, who had operated the hospital continuously for a hundred years, transferred the assets of all five hospitals, including Seton and Seton Co-side, to a new entity called Verity Health System. At the same time, Verity executed a management services agreement with a new company called Integrity, and Integrity provides the senior executive leadership that governs the oversight of the corporation. Verity is an independent, not-for-profit, nonreligious corporation, so we retain that not-for-profit status that we had prior to the transfer. Blue Mountain established the Integrity Health System, and they have this management agreement to operate the hospital and to operate the system for up to fifteen years. As part of the transaction, Verity and Blue Mountain invested a nonrefundable hundred million dollars in the operation of the hospital, and also was responsible for arranging a hundred and sixty million dollars in bond coverage to continue to operate the facilities. Blue Mountain does have the option to convert the hospitals to for-profit any time after the first three years. Both the Daughters and Blue Mountain worked together to ensure that this transaction was appropriate, and that it was structured to be beneficial for all parties. As part of the transfer of assets, the Attorney General was involved, she did weigh in and approve the transfer. She also made a number of conditions on the sale, one of which was that we have to continue to operate the facilities for a minimum of ten years. In addition, she imposed charity care requirements in the neighborhood of 1.7 million dollars a year, and community benefit at just under 1 million dollars a year. I'd like to move forward to today to share with you some of the changes that we've made. You can see that there's been a whole new executive leadership that's come into the hospital. So, in addition to my position, we've recruited a Chief Nursing Officer and Chief Operating Officer... Officer, as well as a Chief Financial Officer, Chief Medical Officer, Director of Quality and Human Resource Director, and all these people come with very significant experience, and we're excited about the opportunity to come and be involved in a transformation. In addition, about seventy percent of the managers and directors are new to the facility, a lot of that primarily because those positions were vacant at the time of the transfer. We spent a lot of time on physician recruitment, and I'm pleased to announce that we've added the following specialties. You can see up there, primary care, medical oncology, urology, ENT, neurology, neurosurgery, orthopedic surgery, and we've also swapped out the existing anesthesia group and the hospitalist and intensivist, and those are some of the hospital-based services. So bringing new medical leadership to the facility as well. We started new programs. The Daughters, prior to the transfer, closed the Infusion Center, and I'm happy to report that we have reopened the Infusion Center. We've expanded the Wound Care Center through addition of new physicians due to the closure of the Wound Care Program at St. Mary's Hospital, and we're proud to announce that we're getting a robot to work with our orthopedic surgeons. We're going to be the only hospital in Northern California able to use a robot to do orthopedic surgery. This will be for total joint replacements. Programs in process include the reopening of the psychiatric unit, which was closed about fifteen years ago, and so in January, we'll be able to reopen that. We're going to dedicate that service to the geriatric age population, because there is no service for those people in San Mateo County. There's a shortage of skilled nursing beds in the county, and so we're going to reopen about thirty-nine skilled nursing beds and work with the Health Plan of San Mateo on meeting their needs. We will open a retail pharmacy in one of our medical office buildings, and we're actually in discussions with a number of providers to build a freestanding rehabilitation hospital on the campus. There are no rehab beds in San Mateo County, and so this will be an opportunity for patients to stay local in order to get some of these rehabilitative needs that they may have. As part of the change in ownership, we did reinstitute a brand-new governing board. All of the Daughters stepped off of the board, and so we brought in a board that's comprised primarily of community members, but also includes a few physicians who practice at the hospital. And one of the conditions imposed by the Attorney General was the creation of what's called a local governing board, and the local governing board is responsible for making sure that we adhere to the conditions imposed by the Attorney General, as well as overseeing community benefit, the contributions that we do for charity care, and any programs that we either open or close. We are in discussions with UCSF about expanding our relationship with them and maybe developing a more formal affiliation. Right now, we utilize their electrophysiologist to come to campus and perform procedures that are only available at Seton. In addition, we are in discussions with cardiac surgeons who practice at UCSF to come on campus and do cardiac surgery. We do that already, but these would be new physicians that would come to campus. We're also in discussions with them about a cardiac rehab program. The hospital closed their program a little over a year ago. We think that's a needed service in the community. And then lastly, you may know that UCSF started their own insurance product that began October 1st, and we're in negotiations with them to become a provider for that product as well. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the Health Plan of San Mateo. As you know, the hospital is the largest provider of services to health plan patients, and so we've really built a stronger relationship with them. I was recently appointed by the County Board of Supervisors to the Health Commission, and so that's enabled us to work a little more closely with them. But we are working together to jointly recruit physicians. They are going to help support the Gero Psych Program and the skilled nursing beds. They're interested in urgent care services, as well as in some chronic pain management services, so I'm really excited about the opportunities to partner with them and to create more services for residents of San Mateo County. Lastly, I want to show you some plans about the hospital in the future. You can see the main campus there, and on the right side of the page, you can see the existing medical office buildings, but we do have plans to add that inpatient rehab. We think there's also a need for what are called long-term acute care services, and a lot of the movement in current healthcare is away from inpatient settings and to more ambulatory settings, and so we're going to build some services on campus that will cater more to the needs of outpatients. The hospital is going through a seismic retrofit. That was also a requirement of the Attorney General conditions. We're going to spend probably fifty million dollars to retrofit the building. We're very excited about that, because we think, for the most part, we'll be able to retrofit in place, meaning we won't have to eliminate or curtail any services during the renovations. And lastly, I'll just ask if there are any questions.
Right, any questions for John?
No, very good. Glad to see that it survived, and I know a lot of people put a lot of work towards that, you know, and, you know, it's important for, you know, the whole community, including San Francisco, you know, it's a lot of patients that come from there also, not just San Mateo County, so I'm very happy to see that it was able to survive.
Thank you, we're very excited about it, too. Yeah, we expect to be here long into the future.
John, I have a--
No, I just know that before the Daughters of Charity was trying to do an expansion, a little bit different than what you're looking at now, and I guess they never could get off the ground with that, but it looks like that you're wanting to do something similar, so.
Yeah, the challenge with the expansion was the cost. To build a hundred-bed hospital would have cost about two hundred million dollars, and given its financial position, it just wasn't practical to do that. Technology has changed a little bit. I'll talk just briefly about it. What the new plan will allow is we will reconstruct the foundation of the hospital, and then the steel infrastructure, we'll expose the steel infrastructure and wrap it basically in carbon fiber, and that creates enough rigidity for the building to meet the seismic standards. And like I said, we'll be able to do that while the patients remain in the hospital, dramatically reducing the cost.
Yeah, sure. You know, when Measure A was being put forth before the voters, you know, Seton Hospital was part of the, you know, the reason to support, you know, Measure A. So, you know, with the transfer from the Daughters of Charity to, you know, this new organization, what's the status of those funds?
So, great question, yeah. What you say is true, when the Daughters attempted to sell the hospital the first time, I think the county supervisors made a decision that they weren't going to help fund what would have been a for-profit hospital. Now that Verity has taken over and the hospital remains not-for-profit, we have begun discussions with the county to see if there might be an opportunity to resume the flow of Measure A funds. I don't have anything to share at this point, but I am encouraged by the discussions and by the response that the county has given us. They've been instrumental in encouraging us to work with the health plan, and so we followed that lead, and we'll see where it takes us.
Okay, John, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, and thank you for living in Brisbane. All right, Stewart, we have a presentation to give to the council regarding our annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015.
2015, yes. So we're in the middle of, our auditors are coming in for 2016, starting on Monday, just to let you know. So we're just finishing that up. Normally, Betsy would be here to give their presentation, but she's retired, and I couldn't convince her to come back.
I've seen Betsy in the house.
She has helped us tremendously as we've gone through the transition with the moving from Mom to Tyler, which was our computer system that you approved, so she's helped us with that, she's helped us prepare for the audit, but she did not want to come here for this one. So it's all up to me.
It's adding all the fun.
That's what I thought. So, just to let you know, the CAFR is our annual, it's an annual audit, it's required by the law. It's based on the Governmental Accounting Standards Board rules, those are called GASB. Very few people who work for government likes GASB, because they keep changing the rules on us, but that's what standard boards do. The Government Finance Officers Association has a recommended format. It's, they have an introductory section, a financial section, statistical section. We do not apply for the award from GFOA for this. It costs us, would cost us five hundred dollars. We used to get it when, back prior to the recession, however, after the recession, we said that we should save money, but we still provide an audit to that level of detail. So the introductory section has a table of contents, a letter of transmittal, an organizational chart, the principal officials, the GFOA award, if it was applied and awarded. So that's what's in your introductory section of this. Your financial section has the independent auditor's report. The format and information is prescribed, has more detail over the prior years. So this basically tells you whether or not the auditors are saying that we are stating our information correctly, and we have received a clean audit, which is what it's called, but what that means is that the information that you are seeing in that is reliable. They've done their due diligence to make sure that the information that we provide them is correct. They do a lot of testing to make sure that the information that they're seeing is correct. There is a management discussion and analysis, which highlights the past year, summarizes our financials, and discusses the different types of funds. And then we also have their basic financial statements, notes, and required supplementary information. The transmittal letter and the management discussion analysis should be considered together to get a full picture of the city. It does not duplicate information, so they are both unique, so you need to read both of them to get the full understanding. We try and use as many charts and tables as we can to try and make it a little bit more interesting to look at, and as we said, it's, our aim is to make it easily to read and to understand. I'm not quite sure that always works. There is a government-wide financial statements versus the fund financial statements. The government-wide is trying to give a vision of a single integrated reporting unit. It's on a full accrual basis, so accrual basis means that you try and match your revenues to your expenditures at the time that they happen. A lot of cities, prior to this requirement from GASB, was on a cash basis, which you kind of end up trying to catch up at times. So we do do a full accrual basis. It provides the operational accountability of what's going on in the city, it presents data and activity by activity, so you have the governmental activity, and then you have the business activity, and also shows the capital assets and long-term debt. The fund financials show the separate funds, it shows, sometimes it's on a modified accrual basis, which is what government, which is government funds, and the enterprise funds are on a full accrual basis at all times. It provides the detail of fiscal accountability, presents data by the funds, and it also shows all of our internal service funds. So we have different kinds of funds that we do. We have governmental, which is activities supported by taxes and grants, proprietary, which is the businesses, the marina, and the utility fund, and fiduciary funds, which are resources that government holds on behalf of outside parties. So what I decided to do this year is a little bit different from what Betsy has done in the past. What I'm going to do is go through the general fund and show you all the numbers, and then show you what page that's on, and then show you how the notes relate to that. In the past, I think what we've done is show, try and give a big picture and then highlight some of the notes. Here, I'm trying to show how everything relates to each other, so as you're reading through the CAFR, you can take this example and do it for all of our funds. So the general fund for 2015 had revenues a little bit over sixteen million dollars, had expenditures just a little over thirteen million, so we had revenues over expenditures of about three point one million dollars. However, that's not the full picture of what goes on in it, because as you know, we do a lot of transfers in and transfers out. The transfers in are six hundred and twenty-one thousand, and those are detailed in Note 4C. Transfers out are three point three million, which are noted and also in Note 4C. So therefore, total releases, our total other finance sources were negative two million seven hundred and forty-six, which is the two numbers added together, so the net change in fund balance was about four hundred thousand dollars. So as we said during the budget time, we were running a budget surplus last year in 2015. So what I did now is going back to show you what Note 4C for the general fund looks like. So the transfers in are the flexible spending account of twenty-one thousand three hundred sixty-five, and that details on page one hundred and fourteen of your CAFR. So the flexible spending account is the money that we put aside, that employees put aside for their health copayments and other things like that. Anything that the employees do not spend comes back into the city's general fund. That's what makes it an IRS tax-exempt benefit. The general liability account transferred six hundred thousand dollars into the general fund last year. This was something that we had discussed at the budget time, there was six hundred thousand dollars more in the liability fund than it needed to cover all of its assets and its liabilities, so we transferred the money back into the general fund. Transfers out are for the 2005 Revenue Bond, Series B, NPTIs for the 2006 Pension Obligation Bond, the 2005 Revenue Bond, 2009 Revenue Lease Bonds, and the 2013 Pension Side Fund, Grants, and then Utility of seventy thousand dollars. Then what you notice, Note 9 for the general fund is the fund balance. As I said before, we had a fund balance of about two point five million dollars. So if you go into Note 5, if you go into Note 9, it shows it in specifics, and it shows we have non-spendable money. So those are loans receivable and advances to other funds, so that's money that's not sitting in the general fund, but it's an asset of the general fund. So then those are loans receivable is two million fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Advances to other funds is one point two million. We have assigned. Assigned is money that we were planning on spending for some other purpose, so that's a hundred and twenty-three thousand for our encumbrances. Encumbrances are items that were approved in the 2013, 2014, 2015 budget that we did not spend that year and would be spent in 2015, 2016. We bring you that back at the mid-year to tell you what those are. The fire sinking fund, so every year, we set aside about twenty thousand dollars to pay for fire equipment that is more expensive than you would anticipate spending in any single year. So something like when we have to replace all of the turnouts for the firefighters, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so instead of having one year where you have a very large budget hit, we now have money set aside for something like that. And then we have unassigned of about nine million dollars, so that's the amount of, that is the amount of money that is available for other purposes that you can put your hands on at this very moment in time. So going, as I said, we had money for the loans receivable. So what the loans receivable are is the loan to the Administrative Services Director for three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and loan to the city manager for two hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety, loan to the city manager for two hundred thousand. Those are shown every month when we do the monthly investment reports, those show up there, and then the loan to the successor agency of one point three, about one point three million dollars, and this is one of the ones that Senator Hill helped us get confirmed through the Department of Finance. So for the advances to the other funds, we have an advance to the utility fund of five hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. This was an advance that was made a number of years ago, when the utility fund was not able to meet its current obligations. The city advanced money to it to be able to pay for it. The utility fund is doing very well at this point, so we probably would want to make that move back, from the utility fund back into the general fund. And then there is the advance to the capital improvement fund, and that, of course, was for the purchase of the visitation lot that we're going to be building the library on, that we're paying off over a ten-year period. On Note 7, we show what the long-term debt was for the city. So we run through all of our, all of the loans for the long-term debt. We show what the outstanding balance was as of June 30th, 2015. We show the current portion, which is the amount that's going to be due the next year, which we budget for, and then we show the payoff date, and that's on page 52. We also have post-employment commitments. So Note 9 shows the pension plan commitment, which is on page 64, and Note 10 shows the other post-employment benefits, obligation, which is on page 71. So the pension plan has a seven point five discount rate, and that's as of 2000, when this was done, this, based on 2014 numbers, was about twelve million dollars. We have a new report, and I'm going to be talking about this on November 3rd, when we start talking about how do we start funding that twelve million dollars quicker. And we probably, 2015 was a bad year for PERS, they did not meet their seven and a half percent expected rate of return, 2014, 2015 wasn't. So there's a larger unfunded liability at this point, and it's probably closer to fourteen million dollars than twelve. And we'll talk about, you know, you started setting, you put money aside of the budget to start paying for that, but we'll go more in-depth November 3rd. Then for other post-employment benefits, we have a three point nine million dollar unfunded liability. This is, you put five hundred thousand dollars back in 1415, you put another five hundred thousand in 1516, and we're putting another hundred thousand dollars in 1617 for that. So we're beginning to whittle that one away, and we'll see that go, hopefully we'll see that go down next year, but it depends on how the investments did. So that kind of shows you how you go step by step through a fund to delve deeper into the information that's on that first page of the fund. So I decided, you know, more examples for better, so the utility fund, which is another important fund for the city. So you had operating revenues of five point seven million, you had operating expenses of four point five, so you had an operating income of one point two million. You had total non-operating revenues or expenses of-- You had total non-operating revenues or expenses of $41,000. Income loss before the transfers were... You had 1.1 million transfers in, which is Note 4C again. You can go there and see what they are. $132,000 transfers out, $677,000. Net transfers were negative $544,000. So change in net positions. This is slightly different from fund balance. This is a change in net position. The reason it's a different term does basically the same thing. Different term because this is a enterprise fund. So they have slightly different terms. So the beginning net position, beginning in July 1st, 2015, was $26 million. The ending net position was a little bit over $26.6 million. On Page 45, Note 4C, you could see what those transfers were. It was $70,000 transfer in from the general fund. This pays for the low-income-rate assistance program. The... This general fund transfers money into the utility fund for people who are not able to pay their full share of their... Full cost of their utilities. We do our LIRA program based on the same way that PG&E does their care program. In fact, if you are on PG&E's care program and you bring in your bill that shows us that, we will put you on the LIRA program, and the LIRA program is a reduction in costs of between 30 and 40% for utility and sewer bills. There was a transfer in of $62,000 from the Debt Service Fund, and then there was a transfer out to the Debt Service Fund of $108,000, and to Internal Service Funds of Ending position, net investment in capital assets, so most of it is capital assets, and that's $23 million. So that's the stuff you have in the ground, or the water tanks and all those lift stations and pump stations. So that's what that is. Restricted for capital projects is $758,000. So that's what we're using for future capital projects. So unrestricted is $2 million. So that's what's available in... Was available in cash at that point in time. So as... That was a quick explanation of it. So a little bit more about the notes. They begin on page 33, and this is as I tried to show, is where you find a lot of the information that's dealt... That's really behind the numbers that are in the book itself. And the first three notes discuss the policies on what our accounting is, how we do our budgeting, what our cash and investments are. We have required supplementary information at the back of it, so that's budget-to-actual data, and it also shows combining financial statements for non-major funds, our internal service funds, and our fiduciary funds. And then at the very end of the book, you will have your statistical section, which shows our financial trends, our revenue capacity, debt capacity, our demographics and economic information, and operating information. It also shows 10 years' worth of data for trends, so if you want to see how we've been doing over the years, that's a good place to look. First four pages are the government-wide information, and then government activities, tax revenue by source, shows ups and downs and backup. And that was a very quick one, because I know we're running against time limits.
Thank you.
But I'd be more than happy to do another hour, hour and a half, if you would like.
Nice to hear that.
So no, you don't want another hour?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Stuart?
Yeah, I had one. Stuart, not to end the meeting, but on that NIPD's fund?
NIPD's, yes.
$300,000, something thousand?
Yes.
Is that more of a liability? That's not what we collect.
No, that is what the general fund transfers over to the NIPD's in order to balance it. So we budget for that at the beginning of the year, so the money that we collect in revenue, the assessment...
From the tax rolls.
Right, does not cover the full cost of the program.
Right.
So the general fund then transfers money out to it.
This is the one that keeps growing every year?
Yes.
And it's a 218 issue?
Yes. And I think we've budgeted like $500,000 this year?
Yeah.
For that transfer, if I remember correctly.
And we don't have any solution for that as of yet? I know CCG's kind of been working on some stuff.
I know CCG has been working on stuff to try and do it countywide. It would... You know, it's one of those things, like trying to do something like that city, you know, just for our city. If you look at it, you know, on a per parcel basis, you know, $300,000 to $500,000 would be somewhere between $150,000 to $250,000 per parcel. So we're hoping for a more of a countywide solution.
Right. We're getting, what, $10 per parcel, something like that? Randy? Yeah. So our money's literally going down the drain. Your microphone's off, Clay.
I'm sorry. Right. We also put franchise fee from the waste collection, about $180,000, and the franchise fee goes into that as well.
Okay.
We decided to collect that in our garbage bills?
Yes.
To cover that cost. Any other questions? Just real quick. So, you know, since our budget hearings, have you seen any trends out there that good for the city, bad for the city, or pretty much online with what you predicted?
I just saw the information for the property tax come from the county of what they're billing this year, and they're billing just about what we had budgeted, so that's always a good sign for a property tax. The first... The last quarter, so the last quarter of 2016, because we don't get the 2016 numbers yet, but the last quarter of 2016, which was March... April through June, we actually received about $1 million in sales tax. We budgeted, I think, about $3.6 million, so fingers crossed. If we can get $1 million every quarter for the next four quarters, we'll be above that. And that $3.6 did not include Stella and Dot yet, because they moved in towards the very end of that quarter. So I'm still eagerly waiting that one. So sales tax is a little bit better than we had anticipated. Hotel tax is about where we... Is about where we budgeted. So, I mean, it's going okay at this point, but I'm a finance director.
Yeah, sure.
Never optimistic people.
In regards to sales tax, we're ahead of where we used to be when we had VWR, correct?
We are about $200,000 below that.
Below that?
Yeah.
Perhaps we might surpass it this year.
We might surpass it this year, but...
Stay on track.
I'm kind of a pessimist.
I know you are, Stuart.
Thanks for the Bob Newhart impression, Stuart.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stuart. Okay. All right. Okay. Consent calendar. Any items that council members would like to address?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, we have some old business. Consider an introduction of ordinance number 611 regarding prohibition of smoking in multi-unit residences, expiration of moratorium on establishing and operating vape shops. And so I guess we had decided to postpone for six months. We were going to do an outreach program, and now the six months have passed, and now it's before us again. Is that correct?
Yeah. First slide there, please, Ingrid. The purpose of this proposed ordinance would be to prohibit smoking in multi-unit residences except for medical marijuana. This was the position that the council took last year. And secondly, that the enforcement of this ordinance, once adopted, would not take effect for six months in order to continue education and get multi-unit residences, the apartment buildings and et cetera, a chance to let their residents know that it's coming and give people a chance to deal with that. Next slide, please. As indicated back in 2015, the council banned smoking in public places and businesses, and also it took action to impose a moratorium on opening vape shops in Brisbane until the council had a chance to... Or the planning department had a better chance to look at whether or not it would be wise to ban those entirely in the city. However, as the mayor's indicated, it deferred action concerning smoking regulations in multi-unit residences until additional outreach could be conducted in the interim period of time. Next slide, please. Following that council meeting, there was a number of outreach efforts conducted by the Health and Safety Committee, by the city staff, by the San Mateo County Tobacco Program representatives, and also representatives of the San Mateo County Education Coalition. That included educational materials, flyers notifying residents of meetings, educational sessions at a number of jurisdictions or a number of different places, including a viewpoint at Altamar, and that is extensively described in the attachment to the agenda report in terms of what that outreach effort... Efforts were. And so the ordinance, as proposed, would prohibit smoking in multi-unit residences, but owners are free to designate their entire building as smoke-free, or they can designate certain areas as permitting smoking, but they have to post signs and locate those areas away from doors, windows, recreational activities, recreational activity areas, et cetera. Next slide, please. The only exception to smoking in the unit would be for medical marijuana. That's consistent with the county's regulations in that regard, and that's what the council indicated it wanted to see in the ordinance, so it's concluded. Concerning the moratorium on opening the vape shops, it's set to expire in November of 2016, but in the intervening timeframe, there's been new state legislation adopted that defines e-cigarettes as tobacco products, and vaping e-cigarettes is prohibited the same way as regular tobacco products, and therefore, the need for local legislation has been eliminated, and therefore, it's been the staff's recommendation, which this Health and Safety Committee agreed, that it made... It would just be okay to let the moratorium expire because the concern that was raised by the moratorium has been addressed through state legislation. Okay, next slide, please. As indicated at the start of my presentation, the enforcement of this ordinance, if adopted and adopted, will be stayed for six months so that property owners can become aware of the new regulations, and certainly, the goal will be to educate and get compliance with the ordinance, not take punitive action against individuals who might be not totally aware of the program. That's the overview of the ordinance. Be glad to answer any questions about it, if council has any.
Cliff, can I just interject real quick?
Yeah, you can start.
Before we get into a big, long discussion, because I feel like this might take a little time, and we might have some public comment, do you mind if we take some point soon, like a five-minute break?
Absolutely. We can take a break right now.
Okay. Right now?
Yeah. All right, thanks. All right, we'll take a five-minute break.